Good morning. I'll call the meeting to order for the January 30th planning session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The meeting will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Now's the time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember O'Neill will provide the invocation and Councilmember Brenner will lead us in the pledge.
Lord, we thank you for this gathering. We thank you for the ability to meet. We thank you for living in a country that allows us to make decisions at a local level. We ask that you give us patience and wisdom and guidance. We ask that you watch over our frontline workers. We ask that you watch over those people in our hospitals. We ask that you watch over those who are sick. Please get them better. We ask that you watch over those people who are healthy. Please keep them that way. On these things, we ask in thy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll into public comments. Do we have any comments from the community room?
Mayor Avery and members of the city council, this is Jim Mosher. I wanted to comment on the purpose of planning sessions. Newport Beach has a fairly long history of council planning sessions. Some of those early ones are not at all well documented, but a few of them seem to have consisted of two-day, all-weekend retreats where the council focused on formulating a long-term vision for the city. Eventually, those evolved into the people through their representatives on the council, establishing at a Saturday meeting what the city's goals for the coming year should be, what the priorities would be, that they wanted the staff to support them in accomplishing. Those goals and priorities were brought back at a future council meeting in the form of a resolution which could be debated and agreed upon so that everybody knew what the goals and priorities for the year were. That pretty much ended in 2014 when, a couple of weeks after the Saturday planning session, then-Mayor Rush Hill, at the Speak Up Newport Mayor's Dinner, announced a set of priorities for the city that had nothing to do with what the city council had agreed to a couple of Saturdays before. And since then, the planning sessions have pretty much devolved into what it looks like we have today, which is pretty much just a discussion of the city's financial situation and a first look at the capital improvement program for the coming year. I think that old format had some advantages because today I don't think the people really know what the council's priorities are. I've heard staff say that the airport is our number-one priority. I've heard homelessness is. I've heard that the state housing mandate is. I've heard the general plan update is. And I've heard the COVID pandemic is. I think those earlier format planning sessions were really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the community room?
Mr. Mayor, Philip Bettencourt, sometime resident at 14 Corporate Plaza across the way. I'm honored to be here today. I may have an attendance record at these sessions. That would even be better than Mr. Mosher's having participated in my first session as a member of the City Manager's Office in 1968. In any event, Mr. Mayor, I wish you well. I salute the city staff and the city family for an extraordinary job done this past year. And to you, former Mayor O'Neill especially, I'm honored to be a part of this community. I also want to send greetings from my good friend, your former Harbor Commission Chair, Dave Gerling, who has been stricken with COVID and is on his way to recovery. He's a neighbor of mine. I spoke to him last evening, and I promise to send everyone best wishes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. Do we have any other public comment?
Good morning. I'm Hua Yan Ye. I have two comments. One, the first one, is about restaurants. So, since the pandemic started, restaurants are relying on takeouts heavily. And one of the things is that they pay up to 30% for delivery commission. And since San Francisco adopted a cap, 50% cap, so cities, a number of cities, I lost track already, a number of cities in the country did that too. And that 50% cap would be in Irvine's next city council agenda. A second thing I want to say is to thank city council for considering the resolution for Amazon to take back their boxes. Now, I want to add a couple of other little things to this resolution if you're ever going to do it. How about those plastic air pillows and bubble wraps? I mean, they're totally single-use plastic, and they take so much space in the trash bins. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor Avery and members of the council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I'm speaking not as a spawn board member, but for myself today. While we are planning for 2021, I would like to talk about our general plan update and specifically about the housing element and the regional housing assessment referred to as RENA. We need to zone for approximately 4,800 housing units. Half of them will be low and very low-income units. HCD has issued guidelines for accessory dwelling units, ADUs. The state of California legislature has passed laws that allow nearly every homeowner in the city to build an ADU or convert a portion of their home to a junior ADU. Once the residents realize that they can build or modify their residences, and to include one of these, they, we will undoubtedly have many of them in our city. We probably have many granny units now that could easily be converted and permitted as an ADU. It will become a source of income for these homeowners, and it will provide low-income housing for our children, our grandchildren, and workforce housing for those with limited incomes who work within our city. It may not be a popular trend for many Newport Beach residents, but there is literally nothing we can do, any of us, to prevent it. Each homeowners' association in Newport Coast and any other area will be unable to stop homeowners in their associations from building ADUs. HCD has issued a handbook that outlines what is required to be an ADU to be considered for RENA. It does not limit the number of ADUs that we can count in our housing element. I believe we should maximize the number of ADUs that we include in our RENA allocation. We are not going to be able to limit the number that can be built. We may as well count them. The trend is accelerating rapidly in cities throughout the state. According to an HCD seminar yesterday, in 2019, California permitted 9,000 ADUs. In 2020, they permitted 15,000 ADUs. And that's without any public outreach or publicity. With 3,500 residential units in Newport Beach, even 10% of those adding an ADU would give us 3,500 units. At 5%, it would give us 1,750 units, ADUs. Whether we're happy about this or not, we're going to see a steep increase in the number of ADUs in our city. As long as that's a reality, we should capture all of them in our RENA allocation. We can estimate high and monitor the rate of permits. We can adjust in a future year, which will allow us time to research and plan carefully for the alternative, which is high-density housing units. High-density developments can only provide a low percentage of low-income units. If we zone for these high-density developments, we will be unable to reverse this zoning easily. I've heard developers say that if you zone for these high-density developments in Newport Beach, they will be built. And they have at least eight years for the economy to gain momentum for this type of density, high-density development to pencil out. If we zone for them, they'll be built. I believe the residents of Newport Beach, when faced with the choice of zoning for tens of thousands of housing units, would prefer to have 2,400 ADUs scattered throughout the city. It's a more place-based strategy for housing, which is exactly what the state and HCD have said is their goal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good day, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. I'll be interested to observe if the format today allows effective citizen participation, and I echo the sentiments of Mr. Mosher regarding the past meetings versus this format. I'm here today to talk about the general plan update and specifically the circulation and housing elements. First, the general plan update has been hijacked by COVID, and my observation is that the circulation element is largely being advanced by a consultant and staff. As our new mayor, I challenge Mr. Avery to refocus this effort with real citizen involvement. All we hear at the few Zoom meetings is how West Coast Highway must be widened through Mariners Mile. Adding traffic lanes, building bridges, and removing pedestrian crosswalks to speed up traffic are not the answers that residents or local businesses are seeking. Another death surely due to excessive speed on West Coast Highway occurred just last week. The housing element has council-appointed, has a council-appointed committee that is solely focused on finding landowners who are willing to rezone their property for high-density housing, where 95% of the market rate, 95% are market-rate apartments and 5% are low-income apartments. Today's, Tuesday's approval of 4,400 Von Karman project proves this to be fact. Without government subsidy, landowners can only make this work at a 5% ratio. Newport Beach residents do not want 48,000 new apartments to meet the state mandate of 2,400 low-to-very-low-income units, yet that is the strategy being advanced. This should be the biggest issue in Newport Beach. Unfortunately, everyone is focused on staying alive or getting their kids back to school. I understand. Under previous laws, the state is forcing cities to allow accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units on nearly every residential property in Newport Beach. The laws that allow this have been in effect for only a few years. There's little track record, but as Nancy Scarborough stated, they are taking off in many areas. The former Coronado Apartments on Sherrington Place and Irvine Avenue have 10 units permitted so far. I'm not advocating for more ADUs, but I believe they are inevitable in many neighborhoods. According to the state HCD ADU handbook dated September 2020, they are required to be considered to meet RENA allocation. Yet, our staff rejects the notion of using them to meet the bulk, if not all, this mandate. Advantages of this approach include: spreading the additional units all over the city; existing housing is already served by local services; residents and not outside developers will likely benefit from building these on their property; and getting credit towards our RENA mandate for something that will happen anyway. Staff has said that this approach will not work, but I cannot find any documentation from HCD supporting that argument. Mayor Avery and city council, please direct staff to fully explore this approach. You may find some success following the current approach, but you will only comply by zoning for 48,000 new apartments in Newport Beach. That will get the residents' attention. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward. Do we have any phones? No phones, okay. All right, so the first planning session item is an update on the city's financial status.
Excuse me. Yes, good morning, Mayor Avery and councilmembers. I want to first thank everyone, the council and the community, for certainly coming in what turns out to be a very beautiful Saturday morning, so really appreciate this. But I think it's a really good opportunity for us to take a moment and walk through some of the different elements we're putting together and dealing with on our financial side in what continues to be a challenging financial environment. I think we're all looking forward and sort of seeing that light at the end of the tunnel on the pandemic, but it's still a little bit ways away. And in this environment, we're continuing to work through of building a budget that's continuing to be a stable budget that also delivers high-quality services to the community. So, I think this provides a good opportunity to show all the different elements we're working on together and to get some input from council as a whole and as a majority on these things. And there'll be, continue to be input from both the community and council through this budget process until we do the adoption in June. So, to start with, we're going to talk a little on the financial elements that we're seeing right now, particularly on the revenue side, our major general fund revenues, and talk about some of the operating pressures. So, I'm going to first turn it over to Scott Catlett, our new finance director, and he's going to start walking us through those key areas.
Good morning, mayor and council. I'm Scott Catlett, the city's finance director. And we wanted to start with giving you an overview of the revenue position that we see the city in in the current fiscal year. So, the table that's up on the screen right now shows you the original budget that was adopted of about $200 million. And then, in the yellow highlighted column, where we see the city right now, six months into the fiscal year. So, you'll see that there's some encouraging trends in revenue, especially in sales tax and transient occupancy tax that we see so far this year. And if those trends hold while revenues will be down from the prior year, they would be up $17.8 million from our original adopted budget. So, that's definitely a positive trend, and that's a reflection of the gradual loosening of some of the restrictions and the comfort that people have had with using the hotels and going out and spending some money. Looking at the details on our top three revenues, property tax is really not affected by the pandemic, and so, at least so far. And so, assuming that recovery continues, property tax, we feel this year is stable and will continue to grow in the years ahead. With sales tax, revenue is down, but it's down less than we had originally projected. We're in the process of working with our sales tax consultants to evaluate the revenue for sales tax, and we should have an updated forecast in a few weeks that would be possibly shared in the second-quarter budget update. Looking at TOT, this is really one of the more positive areas in the revenue forecast. And while we've gotten more data on occupancy trends, we're seeing that start to recover. And there was a little bit of a drop as a result of the recent stay-at-home order, but with that being lifted, we see that improving. And by the end of this fiscal year, returning to about a 60% occupancy level generally, and that would obviously have a significant effect on our revenues. We were forecasting a pretty dire situation for TOT at the start of the year, to be conservative, which is an important thing. But now that we have some track record behind us and we can see the trends in revenue, we're more comfortable that those revenues are recovering and that will continue to occur. Another bright spot with TOT is that the Renaissance Hotel is supposed to open next week, so that's a good-sized hotel here in the city that's been closed for a while. And so, with that open, we'll see additional TOT revenues from that hotel.
Can I just jump in and add on that TOT? I think we're very fortunate with what our tourism is here and being the beach community and the demands for it, because if you look at some of the TOT projections and estimates in other neighboring Orange County cities, it is not the same. And the ones that are particularly reliant on convention center or business conferencing, those are continuing to suffer quite a bit. But the fact that we're seeing a little stronger of a rebound, I think, is a very good sign for us and a sign of the health, you know, of our community and our growing, you know, strong base of that tourism industry here.
Absolutely. Turning to the expenditure side for the current year, we're going to be bringing to the finance committee in February an update on the second quarter, and so, we're still in the process of finalizing those numbers through December 31st, and that'll be before the council then on the 23rd. But looking at the preliminary numbers, we are under budget for the first six months of the year, which is an encouraging trend and is similar to what we've seen in past years. And that's indicative that expenditure savings are starting to materialize, and that should turn into a surplus at the end of the year. There's also some good news from the standpoint of receiving some CARES Act funds that have come in from the county and the state. And so, we'll have about $1 million of those funds in the current fiscal year that will serve to offset general fund expenses. We've also submitted a FEMA claim, which is pending, but if that is approved and ultimately reimbursed, that is about another $565,000 that the city would be able to reimburse for costs we've incurred in the pandemic response. So, overall, the city is doing well on the expenditure side in the current situation and is on track to stay within budget for the year, with the caveat that because we did make some cuts to the budget this year, the savings may not be as large as what you've seen in prior fiscal years at the end of the year because there was some tightening in the adopted budget.
Thank you, Mary. I asked a question. When we were going through last April, May, June, during the early days of COVID, and we were going through the beaches being open and the influx of visitors into our community, which required extra public safety expenditures. Now, when you, we recouped some of that, have we recouped all of it in terms of what our COVID-related public safety and other, I mean, public works as well, closing the boardwalk, opening the boardwalk, all these overtime-related expenses? Have we recovered that from these external sources?
Well, I think what Scott had alluded to of our claims being put in, we certainly, right from the beginning of the pandemic, put a special charge code, a cost code, for people to charge against so that we know what the full expenditures we are, that we were incurring that were COVID-related. And we've been very aggressive about claiming for all of those, but FEMA's rather slow.
Have we been reimbursed? I mean, will we, are they all, I have confidence that we're submitting the claims, but are we being reimbursed dollar for dollar?
We've been reimbursed some, and I'm trying to remember last, in the last fiscal year, we got...
We got about $800,000 last year of CARES Act money, so there's a total of about 1.8 million towards public safety. And then, there's this additional 600,000 from FEMA.
Okay, well, that's wonderful. As I say, is that, what was our cost? I mean, are they, are we getting dollar-for-dollar reimbursement?
I think we'd have to go back and see what that ratio is. And I'm trying to say, I don't think it was 100% reimbursement from FEMA. I think there was an 80%.
It's just that I felt, you know, when we were talking about this challenges with the open beaches, because that was the only, still is the only really free entertainment that's available to people, and they were, the visitors coming to our city, but that did impose significant costs on our city and public works, public safety, et cetera. I think we, it would just be good to know what those costs were, and if we're getting them reimbursed, that's fantastic, as what the expectation was. But it would be good to know how much.
Yeah, we can report on what we've claimed for and what we're getting back and seeing what that looks like, yes.
Thank you.
So, looking forward to where we think we might be at the end of the fiscal year in June, as I mentioned, we would expect there to be some surplus at the end of the year as there has been in recent years. One thing we did want to mention, though, is that typically that surplus would be utilized for paying down liabilities as well as for neighborhood capital projects. And wanted to remind the council that with the six-tiered strategy that we use to balance the budget for the current fiscal year, that there still are some items that have not been restored that the council may wish to look at later in the fiscal year. And we have a chart here on the next slide that should be familiar from back during the original budget process. And if you look at the columns there, you'll see that in the first and second columns, those are the reductions that were made to the operating budget that have been achieved, essentially. The first column being direct cuts to services and other items in the budget, and then the second column being the results of the hiring freeze, which we're seeing materialize. So, those two, we're comfortable will be achieved in the current year. In the fifth column, the council at the first-quarter budget review restored the cut to the contingency reserve, or I should say, the draw from the contingency reserve, and so, that has been restored. There was also about a $500,000 restoration in column four to some of our vehicle replacement charges. Public Works will be speaking later about the cuts in column three relative to the capital program and whether some of those should be restored. But we wanted to highlight column four, which shows still about $4.5 million of reductions in the contributions we make to our insurance reserve funds as well as to our IT replacement fund. So, at the end of the fiscal year, if the revenues that we're seeing so far materialize, there'll be a surplus, and we just want to point out that we may wish to consider backfilling some of these cuts before we move forward with looking at those other items. Looking forward to next fiscal year, we wanted to show you a preliminary look at revenue. And so, if you look at this table, what we're projecting for 2022 is about a 5% growth from the projection for this year. But it's quite a significant growth from the original adopted budget and where we were. The downside is that if you look over toward the left at 2019 and 2020, we still wouldn't be back to where we were in 2019. And had the pandemic not hit at the latter part of 2020, 2020 clearly would have been higher than that 229 million that you see. So, these projections are still evolving. They're very encouraging, but by no means does it indicate that we're back on the trajectory that we were on back in 2020 before the pandemic hit. So, there will be an opportunity to hopefully have a little bit more resources in the general fund, but there will still be some challenges in bringing forward a balanced budget that incorporates all the things it needs to have in it.
Mr. O'Neill.
Real quick, when you go, can you go back for a second? This is maybe a personal request, but in the future, when you're showing the 19 and 20 actuals and whatnot, could you do 18, 19?
Sure.
The reason it's important is because when we're looking at these, it helps to remember that, you know, the 20, 19, 20, actually, the 2020 actual is actually half of 19, half of 20. And then, when we're looking at the 21 original budget, it helps to remind people that that budget took into account the pandemic. So, anyway, that's just a personal preference and appreciate that.
Happy to do that. To give you a little bit of more information on our top three revenues for next year, on the property tax side, we're projecting growth, and as I mentioned earlier, there really isn't a significant impact to property tax thus far from the pandemic. However, one impact that will make our revenues lower than they might have otherwise been is the adjustment factor due to Proposition 13. And that's based on a consumer price index factor that is determined by the state, looking at October of this year versus the prior year. So, that number has come out at a little over 1%, and normally, that would be 2%. This is the first time that's occurred since fiscal years 16, 17. And so, the effect of that, then, is that all of our properties that would normally go up by 2% will only be going up by 1%. And so, that's going to serve to reduce the property tax revenue that we'll see in that year. Good news is, is that home sales are strong, but we're also seeing a reduction in AV growth. And so, that's the reason for that number looking in the 3.5% range versus up in the 4% or 5% you may have seen in prior years. Sales tax is also a bright spot in comparison to where we were with our projections at the start of this fiscal year, but again, not back to where it was before the pandemic. We are continuing to work with our consultants, and that's evolving, and that number may yet have some room for improvement before we bring forward the budget presentation to you later this year. And then, in TOT, again, seeing improvement, a positive trend, and right now, to be conservative, we're foreseeing that that would grow from that 60% number I mentioned earlier at the end of the current fiscal year to about an 80% of prior to pandemic revenue at the end of next fiscal year. So, still a good improvement, but not back to where we were before the pandemic. And then, we would look forward to the 22, 23 fiscal year for revenue hopefully to return to the pre-pandemic level and then start to grow beyond that.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, mayor. Back up there on AV growth has been trending down for the last few years. That's alarming.
Well, some of it, I think, has to do with the fact that, you know, after the recession, there was a pretty good recovery that occurred, and so, we're starting to see a little bit of a plateau of that, and now, now things are still growing. They're just not growing at that rate that they were. But still, 3.5% is a good positive trend.
I think it used to be like 5% or 6%?
I think we did have some years that were up in that range, yes.
Well, and just in terms of our future long-term planning, I mean, if that is a consistent trend, granted, there are recessions and whatnot, but our property values have remained consistent, assessed values remain consistent. Maybe we should just be mindful of that in our long-term planning because that's a number that we traditionally would plug in at a higher percentage.
Definitely. So, at this point, we wanted to move forward and look at the development of the operating budget and specifically show the timeline for where we are in the process and where we're going to be in the near future. So, right now, as January is wrapping up, departments are working with the staff in the finance department to finalize their budgets, which will be going forward for review by the city manager's office in the month ahead. And then, on this next slide, we have a calendar just illustrating all of the dates for the council, the finance committee, and the public to review the budget. So, in February, we will be bringing our long-range financial forecast to the finance committee for their review, and that will follow up in March with the council's early look at the CIP and the finance committee looking at our revenue assumptions. Then, in April, we'll be bringing the budget to the finance committee for their review in preliminary format, and then forward to the council for the first full review of the budget document after it's finalized in May, followed by the joint meeting with the finance committee and then adoption of the budget at the public hearing in June. So, a number of opportunities for the public, the council, and the finance committee to review the budget, and we will have more information as the budget is refined to share. Last portion that I will speak on is the first portion of our operating budget pressures discussion, and that has to do with our strategy over the last few years to pay down the unfunded pension liability and some recommendations and thoughts on how we would proceed with that. that in the upcoming budget year. So the table on this slide shows over the last four years and then looking forward into next year, what the minimum contribution would have been to our pension UAL. And you can see that is the first line. And then below that shows the additional contributions that the council has authorized to accelerate the paydown of the UAL. Notably, in the fiscal year that we're in now, that number was increased from 35 million up to $40 million. And that was done through a $5 million set aside, which the council released for payment to PERS during the first quarter budget update. The intention looking forward from there would be to review with the council options for that 21, 22 fiscal year. And to take a step back and look at where we were last year, when we discussed this with the finance committee and ultimately the council, staff's recommendation at that time was to mitigate possible additional losses because of CalPERS not, in the future, meeting their 7% investment return target. There's a thought that that would come down to a lower level. Contributing an additional $5 million over the next five years, this year we're in now being the first, and then an additional $2 million after that. So that was staff's recommendation to the finance committee. And ultimately, when that came forward to the council, council's direction was to make that $5 million contribution, but then evaluate what to do in future fiscal years. So options that are available to the council in the budget process that we're entering now would include going ahead and continuing that $5 million contribution, so making it $40 million again for a second year. We could look at putting that $5 million into a reserve account, as we did in the current year, as a hedge in case there's budget challenges in the year that's coming up that we may not anticipate, and then make that contribution later next fiscal year once we feel confidently that it can be made. And then the third option would be to return to 35 million, which was our strategy prior to the current fiscal year. And on this slide, we have a chart here just to illustrate kind of if we stay at the status quo of $35 million, what would that look like versus if we contribute more? And what you'll see here is that in about five years, we would reach an 80% funded level with CalPERS projected. In about 10 years, we would be at 90%. And then in about 15 years, the UAL would be paid off based on current assumptions. You may recall that this chart, I think, last year ended in 2034, and it now extends out a little bit further. That has to do primarily with the fact that CalPERS earned about 4.7% last year versus their target of 7%, and so that there's some changes that occurred to the UAL. But still, in this chart at 35 million, the UAL would be paid off within 15 years. And obviously, if we contribute that extra $5 million to the UAL, then this chart would move upward, and that funded status would increase at a faster pace. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to the city manager to talk about some other service needs.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I'm going to move into, oh, can I? The first one I want to touch on is funding for homeless strategies. We've done quite a bit of work on this area and continue to, of course, put more resources in here. But one of the, the strong elements that we really want is the long-term strategies for homelessness. And two of those have been, first, the partnership with Costa Mesa on their homeless shelter and getting the 20 beds from their shelter that will be opening, I think, at the beginning of April. And in that agreement, as you all know, we've made our first contribution on the capital side of the 1.6 million. We had housing mitigation, housing reserve funds available, as well as some of the HOG Development Agreement funds that are specified for homeless shelter services that we're able to utilize for that 1.6 million. From this point forward, once the shelter opens and it's operating, there is an annual $1 million cost for us for those 20 beds and the navigation services and all that goes with that. So that will start to be developed. I think we'll figure out with some of the HOG funds that we have remaining now to fund whenever it opens in April through the end of this fiscal year. But now I'm looking at budgeting that, the full dollar amount for the upcoming budget. So if we have the $1 million and then we have the $300,000 from HOG, we have that gap of 700,000 that I'm looking to build into this general fund operating budget. That's what I'll have to go into. So that's one of the main things here on homelessness. And then the other piece that I'm excited about is the permanent supportive housing partnerships that we're looking at. If you recall, we talked about this, I want to say several months ago, with city council. It's something that certainly the housing committee and ad hoc group has looked at for quite a bit. And we ended up going out and doing RFP to look for permanent supportive housing developers that we can partner with for a potential project in the city. This is a longer-term goal. We know that permanent supportive housing is key to the long-term solution and really think this is part of our contribution for the county in this area. So we have two very strong developers who have expressed interest and were, came out to be rated highly qualified. But part of that is showing the city's commitment. And what we talked about in the RFP and what we've talked about with council is a city contribution as part of the matching, because as I think one of the members have said, this is kind of a lasagna effect of getting a affordable housing, a permanent supportive housing project built, of different layers of funding sources needed. So we're looking at, for the city contribution to be in a $3 million range is the recommendation. So is that something to talk further with council about, of building that in for this budget here? We do have, we had a recently approved project, the 4400 Von Karman, that had some funds in there for affordable housing, I think about a million dollars. That's right. So that could certainly be a part of that 3 million. So I think we're looking at what kind of funding sources besides the general fund that we can put together with this. But I think there will be some general fund, one-time funds that would need to be a part of this. So certainly would like some input there on that. We do plan on bringing back a little more fuller discussion about the permanent supportive housing proposals that we've gotten to council at a future study session. We're looking in February. So certainly don't need to make, you know, full decisions here, but I just wanted to put this on your radar here.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up. Grace mentioned this in terms of the development on Von Karman, that a portion of that is, as any development project contract agreement, funds go into affordable housing. Do you know off the top of your head, just on, in terms of on the trends, in our, the trend line on our affordable housing reserve fund, which that million dollars goes into, I think we're at, my sense is we're at a low level. We used to have several billion dollars in that fund.
We did have several million. We had used it for another permanent supportive housing project, The Cove, that had used some. But what, we did use the last of what we had in the reserve for that capital contribution for the homeless shelter. So that's.
And so going forward, just as we know that we're going to be talking about housing and affordable housing, we should probably do some kind of a projection on what we see in terms of getting those funds contributed by development projects into our affordable housing, because that is what would pay, that's what's intended not to draw from the general fund, but that's why we have an affordable housing reserve fund.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And I certainly think we have community development and finance working closely together on looking at. And there's also different elements, right? There's affordable housing funds. Sometimes there's park dedication funds as well. So all those elements we need to forecast and look at with upcoming projects that are occurring.
Right. Okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Brenner.
Yes, Grace, I know, I feel like staff has a good comprehension of our overall housing element and all the different components that are coming together. And I think our housing element update committee is kind of focused on the big projects. But I'm feeling, as a council member, like I don't really have a good understanding of the scope of housing in Newport. And one of the things, when I look at this permanent supportive housing, is that I don't know whether our, maybe the, I think the staff probably sees how the subcommittees on that housing element group are looking at potential properties that could work as our permanent supportive housing. I don't think I know whether the potential development partners that we've identified are working with those people on the subcommittee that have identified properties that they think would be potential solutions for us. I guess as a council member, I just feel like it's our responsibility, but we gave it to committees and staff to do. And I don't know that it has come back to us enough for us to be really the ones directing how this is going. So, you know, I know it's a big topic, and I know we always have so much to deal with, that I don't know whether, I probably should have asked that that be part of our planning session today, because I don't know if other council members feel like they're not as aware of all the different aspects of this as we need to be. But personally, I'd like to have a better understanding about it and how the different parts are working together.
Okay, no, I think that's a point well taken. And in fact, we are looking to bring an update about what's occurring with the housing element, actually at the next council meeting as a study session item. So I think this would address your concerns directly.
But I specifically want to know that the potential partners, the development partners that we have identified are familiar with the properties that this housing element update subcommittee looked at.
Yeah, I think we would marry those together. And the developers we're talking about, they're very, they're experienced developers. They're looking, they understand what we're doing on our housing element side. And they have, in fact, have asked those questions. Do you want us to specifically work on, you know, look at particular projects that are related to what the housing element is identifying? So yeah, so those will be put together.
Thank you.
As we move forward.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to just see if the council has any further questions regarding the financial update or the homeless funding. Okay, seeing none. Do we have any public comment from the community room? Okay, no comment. Anything on the phones? Great. And so now we're moving on to the operating budget. So Ms. Lee Hung, and then we're going next to recycling contracts?
Yes. So another topic, and I don't think we need to talk on this very heavily, given that we did have, you know, our council meeting that just happened. But this, again, is something we need to build into our general fund budget, because as we talked at the meeting, our refuse recycling contract is in our general fund, paid directly from there. And just, oh, let me go to that slide. And, you know, and the bottom line to this one is it's a $2.9 million increase annually on our refuse contract. Council did approve, looking at adjusting the recycling fee. So if that recycling fee does get adjusted, and we'll, we're beginning the process there now, then there's still a net cost to the general fund, if the fee's approved, of about 1.5 million. So that, again, is something else that we're looking at in building into the budget. And to take a step back a little bit, so when I'm looking at this budget, Scott showed some good numbers, something, some positive revenue growth, which is great. And I think we're in a better position than most cities. But at the end of the day, when you look at that bottom line, it's still not up to the revenue we had from two years ago. So I'm, you know, looking at that constraint with what these operating budget pressures are and trying to make the right balances there. I have told all the directors in the development of their operating budget, this is a year that we're going to continue to stay tight on our operating budget side to get through this cycle. I think after we get through this fiscal year or during this fiscal year, I think it'll be clear where the growth and the recovery is happening. But at this point in time, we need to, you know, keep strong in how we're keeping all our expenditures very tight, given there's some things that we have to do, like this refuse contract I will move on to the next area of pressure point is on code enforcement. And certainly, this has been a hot topic over the last year. And there's certainly been a lot of activity and resources put in and done. And I think we've also come up with some creative ways to get more from the resources we have. So I'm going to turn it over to Simone to talk a little bit about some of the data and then the work that we're doing here.
Thank you. Good morning. Simone Georges, Community Development Department. Just a brief discussion about just code enforcement staffing. And up on the screen there, you can see our 2019 total cases versus 2020. They're very close. We didn't plan it that way. That was just really coincidental. But, you know, we get about 3,800 cases a year. And at the bottom table there, you could kind of give you just a sampling of what code enforcement works on. And you could see from the left to right, that top line for short-term lodging, that 62, that was for 2019, and that bottom row is 2020. Clearly, a lot of COVID-related issues with short-term lodging. And so we had a spike on short-term lodging cases. On the far right, you know, our staff really works with our Realtor developer, our realtors, on our residential building records program, which is just a history of the compliance of a single-family home or duplex. The realtors enjoy that program, so that's been very, it's been going really well. And on the next slide here, we just want to talk about just our staffing level. So it's not a very big division from a code enforcement standpoint. You could see on the top table there, we have three full-time code enforcement officers, and we have one part-time officer. We've just recently, through a pilot program, we've brought on board a contract code enforcement officer. And that column on the right, that cost is about $104,000 per year. So that's an annual cost. And if you look at the schedule there at the bottom table, so we've been able to adjust our code enforcement staff, basically spread them out. And so we have code enforcement available Sunday through Saturday, so seven days a week. And just recently, through the contract service that we have, we're offering that nighttime code enforcement officer. So if you see on a Thursday, that officer starts at 6:00 PM, works till 3:00 AM. So we do that Thursday, Friday, Saturday. They start at 6:00 PM, and they wrap it up at 3:00 AM Monday morning. And so when I speak with my code enforcement staff, as far as talking to them about their staffing levels and how they feel, they feel what we have now is adequate. They do see that we are providing that weekend enforcement. And really, the question for the council is, are you looking to see more enforcement on those days, on those evening hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? That part-time contract code enforcement officer just begun about a month ago. So it's still early in that program, and, you know, that individual's getting their routine in. They have a number of cases. They're busy in the nighttime. This is our slow season for short-term lodging, so we're definitely trying to strategize and get ready for our busy season, which starts in the springtime. So really, I'd love to hear the council's comments and their feedback on regarding code enforcement.
Ms. Dixon.
I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. Couple things. Didn't you lend a code enforcement FTE to the Harbor Division, Harbor Department?
Right.
So did you recover that, or?
No, that was a permanent transfer from, that the council authorized last budget cycle from code enforcement division, was a full-time supervisor over to the Harbor Department. So that's a permanent position now.
So are you down one position?
Well, you know, from a city staffing standpoint, we're clearly gave up one position, so yes. But we've kind of made it up with that contract position, too, that .75. So it's, you know, I think, I think we're handling it pretty well so far.
Previous slide on the building permit issue, what do you attribute that rise to?
Work without, the work without permits. You know, it ebbs and flows. Each one of these categories ebbs and flows. What I don't have here on the track, on the screen is how much trash complaints we get, you know, people leaving their trash cans out, you know, multiple days throughout the week. So it's really hard to predict. I don't attribute that too much to anything different. You know, we can hypothesize why we see a spike in the work without permits, but, you know, there's, I have no facts to base it on.
Have we, I know historically, we've always worked really closely with builders, walking them through all the requirements for this operating in the city. Are we seeing different builders or people that, companies that aren't familiar or have not been long-term contractors working in the city?
Right. We definitely do. You know, there's a lot of development in Newport Beach, and we all experience that. So sometimes there's a shortage of staff to man job sites. And so they draw from other resources throughout the county, throughout the state. So, you know, I would say 50% of our builders are regular builders, and maybe 50% are just from out of town and coming in to provide that workforce to build. We do have restrictions on Saturday and Sunday construction, you know. The word gets around, but we still have contractors that are violating that, because they get pressure from homeowners to finish their jobs, too. So we're constantly chasing it. So we're constantly chasing it. So it's a wide range of what we see from a workforce standpoint.
And then one final comment we've heard in the last several months because of short-term rentals, obviously, and even on the boardwalk, code enforcement through public safety, seems because of COVID and the ramp-up of visitors to our community, there's just been demand for enforcement. I'm satisfied in terms of my district in dealing with the short-term rental demand that I know a lot comes from my district on code enforcement. I know you're constantly fine-tuning, but let's see how it goes. I mean, we've got to go through a busy high season and see if that's sufficient, but we'll see how that goes. All right, thanks.
Mr. O'Neil.
I'm going to hold my comments on the budget until the very, very end. So I just had a quick question on this one. Is this cases opened or cases with actual citations?
No, these are, these are cases open. These are, these are not citations.
So how many citations did we give on short-term lodging and work without permits and business residential building records?
I think, I think our averages, we issue about 15 citations a week. And that ebbs and flows depending on our, the level of, level of busyness, where there's high seasons and low seasons. But I want to say the average is about 15 a week. With short-term lodging, because we were currently under an emergency ordinance, we're banned new short-term lodging permits and restricted to three nights minimum, so definitely we see a spike in that and that short-term lodging complaint. Most of the time, what we do is we issue a letter. We issue a notice of violation, a violation letter before it gets to a citation. We don't generally jump to citation as the first notice.
Okay, all right. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, Simone, I think maybe things have been quieter since we've actually been talking about regulations. I know in my neighborhood, I've gotten a lot fewer complaints about short-term lodging than I used to get. So, you know, perhaps people got the message that it just wasn't a free-for-all and that people are, I think the people around me are being very responsible these days. So hopefully, that's the unintended consequence of our even talking about this. I do have a question about whether ADUs and their proliferation will create more staff requirements for you. I know just among us, talking about it, that there've been questions about having someone come out, look at what, you know, what's necessary to turn something into an ADU and that sort of thing. So is this going to create a necessity for more staff for you if ADUs do become a trend?
Right. So right now, our trend of permitting is about 25 ADUs per year. And if the council would like to see that trend go up, you know, it's going to be hard to imagine that it goes up more than double. So if you go from a 25 ADUs to 50 ADUs per year, it's so small for us. You know, we do about 3,000 projects a year throughout the city. I just don't see the spike in ADUs really going to drain our resources at all.
I think that may be an underestimate. We, you know, we really don't know what, what the trend is going to be because people haven't really known about this much in the past.
True. And I think that's the conversation we want to have on February 9th during this study session. What does the council like to see on ADUs in the community?
Ms. Dixon.
One other question, back to short-term rentals. And obviously, we've talked a great deal about this in the last several months, but I just want to clarify the issue we have with citations. As you say, the current code requires a letter, and then X number of days go by for that response and for that corrective action. And what we're finding is that, for example, capacity, occupancy, we cannot truly enforce that or cite that unless we enter the property, unless our inspector enters the property. So we're experiencing some challenges in executing on the ordinance because we cannot, we, somebody has to visibly see that infraction, not a resident, but a code enforcement officer or a police officer has to witness the infraction. And the time lag before someone can, a code enforcement person gets out there from the telephone call. So we're still dealing with some startup issues through no fault of anybody, but the cumbersome requirements in a due process U.S. Constitution standpoint, we have to be careful as a city, certainly, of how this is enforced. But it does preclude citation writing because we can't access the property.
That's true. We do have to witness the violation for the officer to issue that citation. And with our nighttime enforcement here, we're hoping to kind of close that gap where there is somebody available to witness a violation of some sort. But again, that's only a month old at so far, and right now, we're in the slow season.
Ms. Leung, we have a couple more items on this.
Yes, so let's move on down my hit parade of items here. So another area certainly that we've had quite a bit of discussion on, and we've been certainly working on strategies here, is on, on our boardwalk and enforcement there. So I have Chief Lewis here to talk a little bit about a pilot program we have that we're excited to kick off here and want to talk about and see if there's support for, you know, if it's successful to continue that into the next budget year. I'll turn it over.
Good morning. Mayor Avery, Council. John Lewis, your Chief of Police. And a lot of discussion last year, obviously, with some of the crowds and impacts that we saw to West Newport, the boardwalk in particular, but also for many years, about quality of life, about boardwalk safety. And this Boardwalk Ambassador Program is an effort to address those specific concerns here. This is a pilot program that we're rolling out with a company called Community Services Corporation, private contractor, and this is one that we have identified with experience specifically dealing with the kinds of issues that we see out here on our boardwalk. We have seen these private contractors, these private programs work with cities in Los Angeles County, but also in Orange County as well. So we identified Community Service Corporation as one that we feel is reliable and is one that we think will, are going to meet the needs that we are asking them to, to do out there on the, on the boardwalk here. And the, the idea here with the Boardwalk Ambassador Program, again, it's focused on quality of life, and we're looking at that through compliance with our municipal codes and focusing specifically on our boardwalk safety rules. You can see the vest there, and this is what we're looking for in terms of visibility, highly visible presence here, professionally uniformed staff out there to not just provide friendly advice and guidance, but also to supplement the enforcement efforts of our Peninsula Enforcement Team, our homeless liaison, and also our area patrol officers that are working down there. The cost on this, the initial pilot program rolled out, we have a not-to- exceed contract of $75,000, and my compliments to the City Attorney's Office on getting this done quickly for us, running into the spring season and knowing that summer's going to be done here quickly. So there was a short fuse on this, and they did a really good job getting this in place. Ideally, for the initial rollout here, we're talking about two-person teams that we're going to deploy on foot, uniformed, patrolling from East Street to 36th Street, which is a long area of the boardwalk. But those are the areas that we've identified here now. And then we're going to fine-tune in terms of the actual needs within that area, how we deploy them, where specifically we're having the most issues, and how we can resource that adequately. We're focusing on the daytime hours right now for this pilot program, which Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 10 to 6:00 PM. We have the ability to flex that, move into nighttime hours if we need to, different days of the week. But initially, we know that from our studies out there and our research, that our highest impacted day is on the boardwalk or during those times on our weekend hours. The status in terms of the rollout here, we have everything in place. We started with the initial training for the CSE employees, and we anticipate here with the finishing up of the uniforms, they're actually the vendor right now, that we'll have them out there potentially next week, but definitely within, within the next few weeks. We looked at annual costs on this going forward. For the way we have it laid out in this pilot for Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, it would be $110,000 going forward. If we decided we wanted to scale that back, we didn't see a need for it on Fridays, and we went in Saturdays and Sundays, it would be about $88,000 annually going forward. So again, this is the pilot here. We're going to learn some things going through this, but I think it, it shows a lot of promise with the issues that we're dealing out there in the boardwalk. And I think it is a really good step to support the efforts that we've already done out there, also with, I want to recognize our Public Works Team and the work that they've done out there to assist us as well. So this is going to be something I think is going to be a positive thing for West Newport and also support to our efforts out there in enhancing boardwalk safety.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
All right, then the last topic I want to touch on here on the operating side is on our Harbor Department staffing. And this is something we've talked about before, and in fact, last year, we had developed some additional position requests and then had to put everything on halt when we, the COVID hit and said, so, and I'm very concerned with new, the new MAP program rolling out and continuing to build a strong foundation out there that we have the right resources to ensure that we implement that effectively and provide the service that we need. So I'm going to turn it over to Kurt Borsting, our Harbor Master, to talk a little bit further on this.
Thank you, Grace. Well, thank you for having me today. And as Grace was sharing, you know, the Harbor Department is the newest department within the city, and it was stood up three years ago. And I think it's fair to say philosophically, it was given a, what I'll call a lean and mean staffing model initially, so that we, as we gained experience, we could better develop the model over time responsibly based on what we learned. And three years into it, we are now operating 363 days a year on the water in our ambassador of the harbor model to really be proactive in educating the boating community on how to use this 800-acre resource. And it's a really, as everybody here knows, it's a really unique harbor. It's one of the world-class small craft harbors on the globe, and it's unique also in that it's embedded within an almost universal residential community. And so this idea of sharing the harbor between those recreating, living, and working on the harbors is quite unique. One of the good news pieces during this awful pandemic is people have rediscovered recreational boating as a safe way to get out with their friends and family. And so it is a busier time. Not only are we standing up this model, but it is quite busy. We currently have been operating under our original model of two full-time staff people and 16 part-time staff. That varies slightly based on time of year. And one of the challenges we have seen is that we do see some turnover with our part-time staff. And so that affects the amount of training, then we have to go through new recruitments, retrain. And, and so with that said, this below there is just a sample of some of the activity to show the volume of activity in just some select areas. And so, so with that model in mind and having a few years of experience under our belt, we are requesting some additional resources. One would be a full-time permit technician. And this person would really be the subject matter expert on all the documentation required associated with, with our operation. So everything from our permitting process with on- and offshore mooring permities, maintaining all of the records, whether it be insurance, confirming that the vessel that's stored on those moorings are, is owned by the permitee, which is a requirement, that we have the proper records in place of maintaining the service to the moorings, so that it's been pulled from the bay every two years and properly inspected, so that we know that it's safe. And also providing support to the Marine Activities Permit Program that is being expanded. And we have, with the help of our Harbor Commission, have been developing an updated permit itself for the Marine, pardon me, for the mooring permits that we will be rolling out in the months ahead, and that will be an intensive effort. In addition to that, we're hoping that the council will consider adding a new code enforcement officer to support what Grace had mentioned. Not only our day-to-day activities, but an expanded Marine Activities Permit and all those things that I was referring to in terms of a shared environment. While we're fortunate, lots of people are discovering or rediscovering the harbor, we also want to make sure that they're not bringing noise and trash and disruptive behavior that affects the community at large. And so we, thank you for giving these consideration.
Are there any questions on the harbor requests or issue?
Are you going to be giving a total proposal for headcount changes?
Not right now, but yes, you know, as part of the proposed budget.
So these are two that are being singled out now? Will there be others or?
I don't think there will be very many more. So the areas I'm looking at are where we absolutely have to, because again, I have told departments we need to hold the line this year through this cycle. So the areas that I'm looking at, and what I'm signaling is the Harbor Department. And then the one other area that I will say is what I've brought up, I think last year as well, is with changes with AB5 and with what Purge does with looking at contract and contract versus city employees. So there, I think there's some isolated cases where we need to do a conversion from a contract to a city employee in order to limit our exposure and make sure everything is kosher there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we have a final slide on this one, I think in terms of the list.
Yes, I do.
Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to make a little comment that I am in no position to say that there's not a need for additional staffing here. But the interesting thing to me is the amount of conversation and how difficult it was for us to get one extra police officer. And this just looks like, oh, we just need it, so we're going to do it. So I think, you know, we get a lot of complaints from our citizens about, you know, that we're not enforcing parking control and noise ordinances and things like that. So I just don't want, I mean, I want us to have a world-class harbor and to enforce everything the way we're supposed to, but I don't want to shortchange that there are other needs in our city that we still get a lot of complaints from citizens about us not adequately enforcing things that they're dealing with, you know, parking violations and noise complaints and things like that. So it has nothing to do with you, Kurt, or the harbor, or wanting the harbor to be absolutely the best it can be. But we get a lot of conversation here when we try to add any extra staff in any way. So I just don't want that to be shortchanged.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I'll just wrap up. You can see on this table, this kind of lays out in a summary form for the different operating pressure points that I had, that we had highlighted here. This is by no means what's actually going to be, you know, in the budget. Some of them have to be, of course, but this is where we're evolving and, and continuing to look at what the fiscal, you know, the revenue situation is as we build the budget, and just, just provides a highlight for council and if there's any comments on, on these. Or, and I realize we didn't take a time to ask any questions on the fiscal, the beginning of the presentation, so if there's any questions there, this kind of ends the first half of the agenda items we have today.
Great, so we'll go into council comments. Mr. O'Neil.
Thanks. This is the first time I was seeing this, so I wanted to make sure I pulled together a bunch of my thoughts as we were going through it. So I'm going to read a little bit of it just to, for, to make sure I'm, I'm not missing anything. So I'm probably going to, I'll start by saying, don't worry, Joy, I'm going to be talking about the staffing issues. I hate to say it, but as I'm looking at this, I'm going to express a bunch of concerns about, about our budget. So I'll start by saying it could be much, much worse. Our friends in Anaheim, for example, are genuinely panicked right now, and there are other cities in Orange County facing much worse situations. But for us, it's important to take a look at this and realize that on the revenue front, we're basically treading water right now. I went back and looked, and it's worth seeing what our trends have been and how we had calculated our ongoing expenditure growth during each of those budget cycles. So in '15, '16, we were at $199 million in general fund revenue. In '16, '17, it was 204.3. In '17, '18, we ended at 216. In 200, in 18, '19, we adopted a budget that was at 216 million and ended at 229 million. And just for folks out in the public, it's worth noting that there's a difference between an adopted budget, which is what you anticipate the year looking like, and the year-end, which is the actual. And then that's just truing up to what the numbers actually were. So in 18, '19, we adopted a $216 million budget, but we ended actually at 229 million. In 19, '20, we adopted a $229 million budget, which we then adjusted down significantly before ending at 229 million, almost exactly what we had budgeted for, which, though, to be fair, and remember that, that was the pandemic hit in the end of third quarter, and we went into the fourth quarter. It was due to extraordinary growth that happened pre-pandemic and tapered off quickly in the last quarter there. So now we're looking at adopting, we're looking at an adopted 2020, '21 budget of 119.5, I'm sorry, $199.5 million budget, which was a reduction of $30 million from the previous year with a projected $217 million ending, still 12 million less than 18, '19 and 19, '20. And then we're looking in the slides that we were presented, it looks like we're looking at a projected revenue of 228.7 million for 2021 and '22, which would be at a projected revenue of 228.7 million for 2021 and 22, which would be slightly less than both 1819 and 1920. And so I, that's a lot of numbers, but it's basically to say that we're definitely treading water over a three-year period when historically we saw a 2.5%, 5.9% and 6% increases year over year in 1516 to 1617 to 1819 and essentially 0% for three years now. Of course, none of our bargaining agreements contain treading water clauses. So our largest expenditure, which is our people, have continued to rise. And state mandates on homelessness and organic waste, as we've looked at, have increased our expenditures annually too. So any, any expenditure increases, we approve, need answers to the following questions, which is, what will we cut? What will we keep cut? Or are we willing to draw down on our reserve to have those increases? And I'm concerned because I'm looking at this last slide, which we're, which is up right now, and seeing nothing but ongoing expenditures. These are not one-time expenses. And so in my view, with due respect to staff, I'll just say this slide does not tell the whole story because this is a whole budget question. Everything on this is a whole budget question. And to respond to one of the things Mr. Mosher commented about, about this whole, what we're doing today, it's probably worth remembering an old quote, which is, "A budget is the city's priorities put to numbers and spread over time." And that's exactly what this is. So as we're going through this and talking about our priorities, of course, it's going to show up. And to Joy's point, I agree. I think this is one of those times where, you know, when we're looking at adding all of these, even the, even the project, even the trial of code enforcement and Boardwalk ambassadors program, the real question is, what are we willing to cut in order to keep these or even not have these on an ongoing basis? And, you know, I suppose the one difference on the harbor, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not signed on to the harbor increase, just to be clear. One difference on the harbor is Harbor Department's asking for that. That one police officer request did not come in from, from our police chief. And I still disagree with that, by the way. No one will be shocked by that. But the, but the, but that doesn't, that, that doesn't really matter. It exists. And so my point though is, as we're going through this, we haven't even started talking about CIP yet, which, Grace, could you go back all the way to the slide where we're looking at the tiered cuts? So it's worth looking real quickly to remember how we actually balanced our budget this last cycle. So the way we were able to balance our budget this last cycle was by drawing down on our contingency reserve, which fortunately we've seen an adjustment that's allowed, that allows us to replenish that contingency reserve. We also did it through ISFs, which those are internal service funds. And so the, we were, that's basically where one department gets charged for services. And it, but, but in order to, to reduce that out, we had to make some assumptions. We've been able to bring back some of those cuts, but you can see the insurance and the equipment replacement were never replenished back in. But the thing that we should really be concerned about as well is that transfers out that, in the capital budgets, that tier three deferred capital discussion. Remember that we were able to defer a lot of projects out of the transfer process, which is, was how we were able to balance this last budget cycle. That's a lot of projects that we deferred. And I know, I'm, I'm sure, because I'm looking at, in front of us, we've got a thick packet that we're going to be talking about a lot of those. But even assuming an increase in revenue this next election, or I'm sorry, not this, this next budget cycle, it's still, like I said, treading water while our operating costs for our, for staffing continues to increase as well. So I, I am, I am really concerned about any, any expenditure increases because I'd like to, if we're going to see expenditure increases, if we're going to see adding bodies, if we're going to see, you know, this CSC on the boardwalk, if we're going to see increased code enforcement, we got to see cuts somewhere else. It's the only way we're going to balance this thing. Unless we're saying that these, these are such incredibly high priorities that we're willing to draw down on our reserves. And that's just a, that's, you know, that's, that's a decision that we have to make up here. But I think it's important as we're looking at the overall aspect of this, which is admittedly a very complicated budget. And you look at a lot of other budgets around our county, they're not this complicated. But they also don't have the complications of the services that we provide. And, you know, it's just, that's, that's the nature of the beast. But I'm pointing all this out for, for council because we're going to be hashing a lot of this out, probably down at the finance committee level. And I want to make sure that when this is coming back up to, to council that, you know, you're, you're seeing this and you're prepared for these discussions because this is hard. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be a hard year. And, you know, the only way that if, if we're talking about holding the line, even just holding the line, we're also talking about cuts still. I mean, because that revenue assumption of what we're looking at in this coming year is still $12 million less than it was three years ago. And then, I'm sorry, 21, I'm sorry, two years ago, three budgets ago, but two years ago. And then, and then we're looking at a, a year coming up where even an adopted budget in June is still going to be at the same level that we ended in 1819. And so given that everything is more expensive and we know that we have ongoing annual expenses of at least $1 million on homelessness, plus at least 1.7 on waste, that's $2.7 million that we did not have in our budget in 18 and 19 that we will in 21 and 22 at the same revenue levels, plus all the expenditure increases that come along with bargaining associations. So anyway, I'm, I'm pointing all this out because we're going to be heading into a nice to have not, need to have, I'm sorry, a nice to have, need to have conversation again, only this time we're probably looking at services and not just capital expenditures. And that's really important because last time, last go around, we were able to have that conversation pretty much only on the capital expenses. And I think we're at the point now where we're going to be having that conversation on service, service levels too.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have to say that I agree 100% with Councilmember O'Neil. Here we still are in the pandemic. We know that there's hopefully light at the end of the tunnel and the macro economy should be doing some kind of a steep increase the latter part of this year. We are very fortunate. We know for many reasons in this city and because our property tax revenues sustain us, sustain a third or more than a third of our budget, or half of our budget in terms of revenues. That's obviously a lifesaver for us. But TOT, while it is better than we thought, it's still down. And sales tax is better than we thought, but still down. I also, compared to other cities, I know Costa Mesa, I just saw something in the paper this morning. I mean, they've laid employees off. We have not laid anybody off. We've just reduced contract hiring. And I don't think we've hired anyone other than a essential replacement. So we've kept headcount flat, I hope. So I think going in, I think it's, it's an important message to the community and to staff that we should hold the line wherever possible. And that means some belt tightening. What I don't see in any of this yet, maybe this will come through the budget process, is where we are cutting back on services, where we are reducing the budgets or where departments are coming in. And I know that's premature. They haven't done that yet. I hope that's the message to department heads to come in with a commensurate reduction in proposed spending and based on prior year because we still are in serious economic challenges. And so I don't think we should forget, and I don't think we, you have, I'm not suggesting that you have, but we have to be cognizant that we're still not out of it. And we should go slow as we go out in terms of our service levels and make sure that the community understands. For example, as Ms. Brenner said, yes, enforcement on traffic, traffic safety is clearly an important item. And we haven't heard what public safety requests would be. But I frankly don't want to see any new positions proposed in this budget until we know we are out of the woods. And I think we have to send that message to the community that maybe even service levels will be affected. Or how can we cut further without affecting service levels? Have we reached that point? Because we have not really seriously cut back on service levels, except for enforcement has grown because of the demands placed on the, on the influx of visitors into our community. So I think the over, my opinion, the overall message is hold the line, no new positions. Let's wait until we're out of this. And I know that there are demands on the harbor. There are more people on the, more boats on the harbor than ever before, I hear. So I know that there are issues, but we still are in a pandemic and in a tight budget year. So, and there's light at the end of the tunnel, but we're not there yet. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
Yes, the, the discussion about enforcement costs leads me to remember that we've talked at various times about looking at our fee and fine structure. And I'm wondering, I mean, I, our staff is so strapped with what they're doing. I don't know whether that's been lost in the dealing with everything else that we've had to deal with. But I know we've had discussions in community groups about looking at whether our fees and fines are covering the costs of, you know, of the enforcement costs and other costs that are, that are created by those. So I want to make sure that we don't forget that. And the other thing, I, it did occur to me that we're talking about reducing services at a time when our property tax revenue is going up. So our people pay, when we're talking about fees and fines covering costs, I think it's really important to remember that our property taxes are really high and our, our residents pay those and they pay it pretty willingly and, and they pay a high percentage. So, and some of our services are supposed to be covered in that, like, you know, our safety and, and some of our enforcement costs, that people are paying for a quality of life in Newport Beach when they pay those high property taxes. So we can't lose the fact that people have already paid for some of these services. So we, we can't cut back on anything significant that people see as included in the quality of life that they pay for in their property taxes.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comments?
Okay. On what Ms. Brenner was talking about on the fees and fines, I would like to point out that on, in enforcing our codes on the harbor, which we haven't done in decades, there will be an offset of income from fines and things. For example, the charter boats, we've never really reconciled their passenger count. We're supposed to get a dollar a head. I've never seen anybody count ever. And then we've got illegal charters going on all the time. I just pointed out one last week, took pictures of it and everything. And then there's construction going on in the harbor. People are putting in new docks and they don't have any permits and things like this. So if we don't get a handle on that with these two folks helping out, just, just consider this is going to continue on. That's what you're going to get.
Thank you. Any other council comments? All right. Yes, I just, I had a comment. Ms. Leon, could we go back to the final slide that listed all the items there? So I think it's just good to keep in mind, and we've been talking about it, but we're, we, the last year has been exceptional. And it's, it's stressed everybody and certainly stressed the city. It's stressed everybody, I believe, at City Hall and everyone who works here and the public and visitors. And, and we've seen this manifestate itself in many ways in the public sphere, putting pressure. So on all of our folks that are in the field trying to, you know, keep people safe and, and deliver services. And so I see this list, and I know everyone up here does, is this is a reflection of, in my view, of people sending all, we get a ton of emails, all of us, from people saying about speeding cars and all the rest of it and noise and trash. And I get photos every week of overflowing trash cans in parks. And this is a, a list that's a reflection of public comment. And that's the way it should work, right? The public's contacting us, we're listening. And then we're, what happens is after we get some comments, we email the appropriate department head or someone in staff, city manager, and we just say, what can we do here? And, and the common refrain is, well, we're, we're, it's not no, it's just, you know, we're really, really pressed here. And so it's a ranking and ordering of importance. And obviously public safety is at the top of that. And then it just ratchets down from there in terms of what, what we can do to manage. And, and I know from my own personal experiences, it's just exceptional work on the part of everybody who's employed by the city to meet the residents' demands. So this list is, I think, just a byproduct that we've, as council members have talked to staff and to management about, that we, we need to deal with. And some of them are mandated, like the recycling fee and our new contract for refuse recycling. But others are, to Mr. O'Neil's point, they're certainly optional. And I think we all recognize that. And, but it's important for the public to recognize it. And that's why this meeting is important and we'll have others. We're, we're not asking people to forgive us for not taking care of a lot of these issues, but we're just in an extraordinary time. And it's not an excuse. We're, we're doing everything we can. But, you know, again, to Ms. Dixon, Mr. O'Neil's point, and I think everyone on, on the dais up here is in the same spot. We're, we're going to hold a line on the budget, I believe, on this. And so these things, as we go forward and if people who watch the budget process, they'll see its right size at the end because we are not going to, we're not going to risk the city's financial health. And we're just going to continue to try and manage with, most likely try and manage with the staff levels that we have and get through this. And we certainly appreciate all the commentary from the public on this because this is how we get this, this list developed. And this is a relatively short list. This is stuff that's sort of bubbled up to the top. And if nothing else, it's certainly going to remain and be added to, be looked at. So when we do get more dollars, when the country and the county and the city come back to financial health, we're able to implement some of these things if we can't do them this cycle. So thank you. And Ms. Dixon, you have a comment?
Just one follow-up to Ms. Brenner's comment. We all face the residents saying, I pay their property taxes. But as I mentioned earlier, we are so grateful that our property tax and a high level of assessed valuation brings in over 50% of our general fund revenue. But it's also just 50% of our general fund revenue. And we have to make up the balance that provides for these fees and services, service levels. And that comes from somewhere. And the, the source of that is the TOT and the sales tax that we're seeing reduction. So it is not business as usual quite yet. And also, this doesn't include labor costs. Have we factored in labor costs for the, going forward? You'll get to that at some point or?
Well, yeah, they're not in these numbers.
No, of course not.
Certainly, as we're developing the budget, on the baseline budget itself, it needs to have its necessary.
But to my, so to my point about asking all the department heads to really be mindful of no increases in, in going forward, and if we are going to have labor cost increases, where are we going to take that from? So right now, we're in an overcommitted situation just on service level requests. So we, it's going to be a tough budget. I guess that's a signal to say to the community, we, we're going to be looking under every rock. And that's our only solution going forward because the more money's not coming in right now. It will in the future, but this year is going to be a tough budget year. Thank you.
All right. We'll open it up now to public comment from the community room on this last tranche of items.
Thank you, Mayor Avery, members of the council. This is Jim Mosher. Looking at that final slide, I had three questions. The first line, the $1 million for homeless shelter beds, that would appear to compute to an ongoing operating cost of $50,000 a year per bed. I believe the city has already committed to that with Costa Mesa. But I'm just curious, are we talking about cots in a communal area, private rooms? Or what, what are we talking about? And is $50,000 a year a high cost per bed or a normal cost for shelters in other areas? On the third line, the recycling fee revenue that we anticipate, should that be approved in, at your March meeting? I noticed slide 19 said that that revenue would be to fully recover current recycling costs. Our current refuse system consists mostly of undifferentiated trash with a voluntary recycling cart. Could we have clarity of whether staff is Could we have clarity of whether staff is anticipating coming back in October with a further recycling fee increase to cover the organics program, which we will have starting in October? And then finally, on the line about contract code enforcement, it's not about the amount of money, but Slide 20 told us about the total number of enforcement cases, and then it broke it down into four categories. The numbers in those four categories only add up to about half of the total cases. So looking at Slide 20, I'm wondering, are there other major, what is accounting for that other half of the enforcement cases? Can those be characterized in a certain category, or are they just miscellaneous things that are all different from one another? Thank you.
Leon, do you have any comment on the, just the recycling part of his question?
Oh, yes, certainly. The recycling fee adjustment needs to be done on a cost basis, and so the most recent cost study did it on the current recycling costs. And so the intent is to have that fully recovered. But Mr. Mosher is correct, we do anticipate the recycling cost going up with the new contract. That's something that could be discussed and determined if we want to do a further cost recovery at a future date. But at this point, we're just looking at the, adjusting the fee for the current recycling costs.
Great, thank you. Hoiyan.
Hi. So, Hoiyan, yep, again. First, I want to say, I always appreciate how diligent-minded the council is with budget. And so I want to echo, I mean, there's so many good points you just made, and so I want to echo a couple of points, that this summary chart, it's really just a short list, and this is not one-time fee. For Tuesday's council meeting, that was a long night. Again, I want to thank you. I hesitated to call in to make my comments, because I emailed already, but it was a long night. I sent you a list of actions that I suggest the city to take, either as the city or as a countywide effort with the county. I actually talked to agencies in other, three other counties. So there is going to be a lot of costs coming up for SB 1383 compliance, that's the organic waste reduction. One of the things is that I'm actually curious, what is the county doing, I say, county-wide effort? Because some counties are leading this compliance effort quite successfully, yet there's more to be done. Is there any meaningful progress we have made? I'm saying this because I am with the county-led trash and debris task force, and every agency pitches in for the annual budget program. And, well, sorry to say, in my opinion, that money is not very well-spent, so we need to be efficient. As a city, as a county, we need to be efficient, particularly when you come to money at a year like this. Another thing I wanted to bring up, this is a really small amount, probably, is that part of the, one, the requirement for SB 1383 is to rescue edible food. The irony is that the charities that have been working on food insecurity are facing two challenges. One is lack of funding, another one is increasing demand for food. Another thing is that, you know, these days, we get a blackout, right? So it would really help if they have the, the refrigeration centers are solar-powered. So again, that's another cost. So the city has been very generously supporting nonprofits with grants. I hope that I support the city to support this type of nonprofits in the future. So probably, that means more money. So that's my short comment. There is a lot more money for SB 1383 compliance. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the community room? Any phones? All right. The second half of today's agenda, the capital improvement program with Public Works, we'll start that after a break of seven and a half minutes. Thank you.
And just briefly, for the last item, I want to note that the city clerk recused herself regarding the boardwalk discussion, the ambassadors, because she has a conflict-related real property and a personal residence. Thank you.
Thanks, good job.